Guys.
Good evening. Call our meeting to order tonight, our special council meeting this evening. Appreciate you guys being here. Okay, so let's go through our roll call.
Mayor Rodenwa, here. Vice Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilman Tony Brown?
Here.
Councilman Hart?
Here.
You have a call, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any public comments tonight?
I have no cards tonight, Madam.
Okay. Excellent. So now we have our second reading of our ordinance for the 23- 2023-602 millage rate, millage. And I will entertain a motion to read ordinance 2023 by six- dash 602 by title.
Also move. Second.
No?
Aye.
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 Aye. This public hearing is to present-
Well, hold on. I just have to read it.
Oh, sorry.
Ordinance 2023-602, an ordinance of the City of Keystone Heights levying the abhorrent property tax millage rate for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024, stating the percentage by which the millage to be levied exceeds the rollback rate, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This public hearing is to present the proposed budget of the City of Keystone Heights to the public for comment, questions, and to review and to make changes if desired by City Council. The process for budget adoption is detailed precisely in Florida statutes, and we must comply with those directives. The first, the very first order of businesses to discuss the proposed millage, the rollback millage rate, and the reasons for the increase in the abhorrent tax revenues. I will turn this now, this discussion over to our City Manager to make certain that we meet all the required communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The name of the taxing authority is the City of Keystone Heights, Florida. The city's count, the City Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2324 reflects a millage rate of 4.2901. That millage rate can be compared to the current millage rate, which is also 4.2901, and to the rollback millage rate, which is 4.0003. The rollback rate is a calculation which brings the same tax dollars next year as for this year, excluding new construction, additions, deletions, annexations, and improvements. I'm required by statute to state the percentage increase of the proposed millage compared to the rollback rate. The proposed rate is 6.34% increase over the rollback rate. Just for note, that is changed on the signed documents. The city's overall proposed budget is $3,387,623.3 and breaks down as follows. General fund, $1,076,244.40. Community redevelopment agency, $444,835.39. Cemetery, $37,216.60. Airport budget, $1,401,157.39. And CIP or infrastructure, which is $428,174.25. The budget increase proposed for this year is directly attributed to the costs of supplies, to the increase of cost of supplies, material services, and other projects such as the corner and parks. Council vote at 3-0 to set the maximum millage rate at 4.2901. The budget reflects the draft budget reviewed by City Council that was presented for first reading on September 11th, 2023 at a public hearing and is being presented for second hearing and adoption this evening, September 25th, 2023.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on the proposed millage. The public can speak and ask questions. Do you all have any questions or concerns? No? Okay. Okay, I will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion for approval. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Need a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2023-603, budget for the fiscal year of 2023 through 2024. Is there a motion to read by title?
Also move.
I'll second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Ordinance 2023-603, an ordinance for the purpose of adopting the final budget for the City of Keystone Heights, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024, and providing an effective date.
I will now open the ordinance 2023-603 for a public hearing, and the public can speak, or have any questions from anybody? Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing. Now call for a motion by council for approval, second, any discussion, and call for it.
I move passage of ordinance 2023-603.
I'll second that.
Need a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Great job, guys. So, Ms. Ratauski, do you have any updates for us?
I do have a few. So the first item that I would like to update council is to let you know that the homecoming parade has been canceled. Due to some financial as well as administrative struggles, I've had conversations with the individual who was waiting on, to know that if we start early next year and when the city can assist in some of those gaps, that it should be able to get out, but there was just a lot that has to go into a parade, especially when you're closing a loop from the high school to the high school, which is very different than what our normal parades are. The second item of business is to inform council that I will be out of the office all day tomorrow. I have a meeting in Green Hope Springs first thing in the morning, and that we are conducting airport interviews until, I think, and the schedule states until about 8:00 tomorrow night. So it'll be a great fun day for us tomorrow. And then I'll also be out of the office attending meetings elsewhere on Thursday. The third item of business that I do have for council, I've had conversations with all of you today, everyone is aware and will, everyone knows my resignation. So with that being said, in a public meeting, I would like for council to possibly consider extending the 90 days that's in my contract so that I can work with the city attorney and give the timeline, an appropriate timeline, so that there does not have to be an interim city manager place, that it can go from your current city manager to your next city manager, and then once we hash out that timeline, discuss how council would like to advertise, where our council would like to advertise, then I can make my resignation formal with the date expected for our, your new city manager. So if that's okay with council, then I would like to go around that section of my contract of requiring a 90 days and extend that out a little bit so that there's a smooth transition.
Well, I'm not happy about it.
I understand.
I'm in favor of extending, extended it out a month. You said 100 to 120 days?
I'm not sure. Now, it's going to be a little bit difficult because we are coming on the holidays, and so those meetings, timelines, and advertisements, things of that nature. My contract lists date 90 days. 90 days would bring me to December 25th-ish if I were to do that, give you a final date today, however, with the timeline, it looks like probably the end of January or February, depending on interviews and contract negotiations. But I would hate to do the city a disservice and have that transition not go well, and so, and the council as well, and at least like to see the next city manager through their personal meeting.
I'm good with an extension.
I have, I'm good with the extension if that's the way this plays out, but I think as a matter of form, we would have to accept her resignation. I'm not prepared to do that. I know I'm probably not going to change her mind, and we could make today's date the starting point, but I hope you reconsider. So I, I for one, would not accept your resignation.
I wouldn't either.
As a matter of form.
I wouldn't name you, really. I don't know what to do with that.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, so you can't leave.
She's trying to make all of us cry up here for God's sake.
Never your shoes before.
I don't want to do that. I got through that whole thing without crying.
But I haven't cried yet, so.
But I'm okay with the extension if that's the way it happens.
Yes, me too.
But let's, let's maybe take it on a day-to-day basis.
I'll, I'll work with the city attorney, work on a timeline, and we'll have conversations on how the council sees fit to advertise.
I'd just like to say that seeing that I've been here in every change of city managers in the past couple ones we've had, if it wasn't for Lynn being here already, we would have had, it would have been a nightmare. And for her to willingly stay until that transition is done, if it was, if it happens, um, I want to thank you for doing that because this, people think Keystone's small, yeah, we're small, but there's a lot that goes on, and it's all in her head. So, um, so I'm just, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I have a couple of comments. I really respect your concerns for all of us and offering to extend your time to transition for smooth operation, and I greatly respect that. I can only hope that you'll reconsider your decision and whatever we can do to maybe do something that would entice you further to consider that stand, because you certainly are a very strong person for our community and highly recognized and respected. And I think it's a job, honestly, that is kind of thankless, because I think there's a lot of people who have no idea what you do, not any idea. And, you know, I put a big Superman on your chest because you're kind of there, it's a 24/7 job, which I personally feel should be paid a very high dollar. I actually looked at positions today, I'm like, dang, we need to pay Lynn some more money. But, you know, I think we should all be very grateful for what we have and, and just can only hope that you'll reconsider staying. I think we have an incredible team right here, and I think we're on the road to some really many amazing things in the next, especially a couple of years. So I do hope you reconsider, but I'm open to whatever you need to do for your personal needs, and I appreciate you sharing that with us today.
What I would throw out for consideration is while we're still in sort of the limbo phase, I know you have not had an evaluation for a number of years, if ever.
Not a city manager, no?
Not a city manager. And should you decide that perhaps your decision could be altered, I would suggest that we would go ahead with an evaluation process, including salary. I would kick that out. Keep that door open.
I want to add another thing. When this woman takes a vacation, she needs to take a vacation, ma'am. We need to, nobody needs to call her, give it to somebody else to handle, and let her have a dang gum vacation, because honestly, she's not had a vacation. She's taking the time off, but there ain't no vacation when people call her all the time.
So, in, in regard to that, Tony, and I totally agree with you on that, because people need to turn stuff off, I mean completely off. Is, you know, when they have, I guess, sort of city clerk, right? Is that like someone that supports your role, and that's a position that we, and we had that, because that's what you did for a while, right?
Yes.
So we never did refill that position, or was it just kind of put to the side, or what happened? Because would that be a-
Just never, never refilled.
Never refilled? I mean-
Lynn did both jobs.
Okay. So-
Does, do both jobs.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's your backup person, correct? Or should be, right?
Should be a partner, help out.
Exactly. I mean, that's what I see, I guess, with some of the other cities. So why would we not do that?
Well, when Lynn first took the job as manager, I said, your challenge is going to be you need to find another you as city clerk. And we haven't found that person yet. So she's just been doing both jobs since then.
We've tried, and we've come close, and I've shared this with, some of the conversations with council individually today. It's, it's challenging for location purposes of finding someone who's local and who's willing to grow and work. I, I'm not saying this as an aha towards me or anything of that nature, but I grew with the job. I came in as a part-time person. Terry was amazing and fantastic as a city manager, and he showed me a lot. I had the capability of sitting in a room with him to understand, to allow me to do the interim, the six months in between Terry and Mr. Cornigay, and then was able to grow again. Bringing somebody into that position, we were starting all over, because that was, at the time, nine years' worth of knowledge that I had that prepared me for the position of city manager. The unfortunate circumstances that we did have an individual, however, different passion life had taken her into a different direction, and she found appalling somewhere else. And so, but that was almost two years of investing in, rolling in, into that role. So those are the challenges and why we don't have the moment to count them.
So really, you're looking at someone who was already here that you could have mentored into that role, that eventually would-
Doesn't have to be.
Didn't have, but we could still go and openly try to hire someone from outside, right? Recruit? I don't, I mean, I think we should do that, y'all. I mean, what do y'all think? Because honestly, Lynn leaves, you bring someone else in, they're in the same situation, where they're the guy who's been out the fires 24/7, and I don't know anybody who wants that lifestyle, to be honest with you today.
Is that a question, really, they don't want this?
Yeah. I mean-
I have had the pleasure of cutting down every tree that has fallen in the middle of the night since 2012. And I, I say that because it's a different, it's a- Different atmosphere, and Mr. Cox is here tonight, but it's a different atmosphere when I have to call the guys out at 2:00 in the morning and say, all right, we're going to rally up, we're going to go to public works, and every tree, every tree since 2012 that has fallen in the middle of the night, I've had the pleasure of put my hands on. And I say a pleasure because it, it's really bad. It's a fun job, and I appreciate council for giving me the opportunity to be here. It's just, it is, it's a fun job, and these people are pretty cool. Yeah.
If we were to consider doing a search but for an assistant city manager to support you, I'm not asking you for an answer, but I'm, I'm just saying that could be a possibility. That way you'd have help, we wouldn't lose you, and you'd have somebody waiting in the way should you at some point in the future decide you want to go to a different position. That would be a program that I would strongly support.
I would suggest you should sit your part.
Do that?
Go sit, yeah. And we also-
Support in role, is it?
And we can, we also do the valuation and look at the increase in your pay. You're, I mean, honestly, you're that important to me personally. I, I probably would not even pursue this role had it not been for you, because I've known you since we looked at buying the property here, okay? When you were still-
Very fun conversations.
And it, yeah, but, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not just saying it based on my four months, I'm saying it's been over several years now. And, you know, everything that I've witnessed, even before this, you've just, you're an amazing woman, and I greatly respect that. And now I respect it even more from this perception or this aspect.
From a slightly different angle, I was sitting on the fence, deciding whether or not I was going to run last time, and had you not been here, I probably would. So you've impacted a lot of people positively.
It's going to be hard to replace you, in other words.
That poor person. I mean.
That's all business that I have to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see where we go from here. All right. Did you guys have anything else to offer?
No.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a lot.
Good.
And I'm, I'm glad everybody's here to hear me.
Go Chrissy.
Thank you. Okay. This is the Keystone Heights City Council meeting. I've been approached several times and asked several times about the, the reason why I'm voting to, for the city to take over the Keystone Heights Airport. I've done my due diligence, I've gone through all the YouTube videos that I can watch, I don't think I'm ever going to watch another, another one, because I have watched a million, and I have watched them over and over and over, and I have taken notes. Hold on just a second. I didn't write it because my, my handwriting is pretty sloppy, so. When I get going. Okay. On January 9th, 2023, the City Council voted to appoint three members to the Keystone Heights Airport Authority Board. During that meeting, excuse me, available to watch on YouTube, a lot, we listened and voted unanimously for three seats on the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. The council heard from the applicant before the, heard from the applicant present, and before the final vote was cast, Councilman Brown made the motion to move the vote for Rex Seamer, and Councilman Hart seconded that motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. This single vote had the following repercussions. Hang on. Council and City Hall received a barrage of phone calls, emails, and requests for private meetings to discuss the vote. The sitting mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry, and all council members received emails from Chairman Kirkland, me, Maria Cersei, and David Dajinay. The first email from Ms. Cersei dated 1/12/23, and this is, I might add, all public record. Ms. Cersei states that we never allowed Mr., the Chairman Kirkland to speak the specific wishes of the airport board regarding who they wanted to occupy the open seat. She goes on, goes on to explain her passion for the airport, but if the City Council continues to do business in this manner, the trust and commitment to the airport may begin to fail. In my mind, this means that if the City Council doesn't change their mind and reinstall Mr. Rashar, they will no longer, excuse me, do their jobs with the passion, trust, and commitment that they all say they have. The second email from Chairman Kirkland dated 1/13/2023, he accuses the council of unconscionable and embarrassing, of the unconscionable and embarrassing vote. He asks for reconsideration and to rescind our vote for Mr. Seamer. The third email from Mr. Dajinay dated 1/18/2023, his words to the council are disheartened and surprised that Mr. Rashar was not reappointed to seat two. He also states, "This tends to make one wonder why sound and proper business practices of considering all applications were not followed during the meeting. This also gives the appearance that there was some level of collusion or unethical agreement between someone since Mr. Rashar's application was not even considered." He goes on, again, to ask us to reconsider our vote. Keystone Heights City Council meets on 2/6/23 on YouTube. Under public comments, Mr. Kirkland spoke to council again concerning our vote for seat two made in January's meeting. He states that he's disappointed about our vote and asked again to re, for us to reconsider. The next up to the podium was Mr. Scott Fryer, Vice Chair. He states that he's hurt that we didn't choose Mr. Rashar or consider his past accomplishments. He too asks for us to reconsider our vote. Ms. Cersei is next up at the podium, current airport, she's the current airport manager's. She says she didn't prepare anything, but that she's not able to wrap her head around our vote. Something is different this time, she says. She asks us to rescind our vote and states that she takes this situation personally. Mr. Chad Rashar gets up to the podium and speaks next. He states his concern for the governance of our city. His application was not considered, and then goes on to say that he encourages the City Council govern accordingly like the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. At the end of this meeting, it is announced by the city manager, Ms. Rakowski, that Ms. Cersei has submitted her letter of resignation. That was very concerning for me, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, because I have everything, this all rolling around in my head, I don't know when it's going to leave, sorry. Anybody who has a good-paying job in this town, that is enough money to sustain a family and sustain, you know, a household, is hard to come by, very hard. I retired from the NAS Jacksonville when I was living, while living here. I worked in Jacksonville for 30 years and drove every, every day back up and forth. Anybody who has the opportunity to make a good living in this town, for anybody just to throw that away because of a vote, my interest was piqued. That piqued my interest big time. That was a personal feeling. All this is all fact, that was just my personal feelings, and that's why I'm stating this all out loud tonight on public record. At the end of the meeting, under council comments, Councilman Hart moves to add to next month's agenda a discussion of the vote to allow the Keystone Heights Airport Authority to speak again about the vote. A vote was taken, and no one made a second, so motion failed.
Technically, was a motion to reconsider.
I've listened to the YouTube. In addition to all the scolding, reconsiderations, and accusations of colluding made to council by the Keystone Heights Airport Authority, and now to discover that someone who had made a good living and a decent wage for 12-plus years would be willing to throw it all away because of one vote, I've just, I just repeated myself, it piqued my interest. On 2/21/2023, Keystone Heights Airport Authority has an open seat after, open seat three after member resigns, effective immediately. Keystone Heights City Council meeting on 3/6/2023, two applicants show up here in the dais for seat three, the open seat that was just vacated. The first applicant is Mr. Chad Rashar, and the second one was Mr. Bobby Ludwig. Mr. Kirkland states that under public, under public comments, that Mr. Rashar is the only one qualified to take seat three, and that the council should do the right thing and put Mr. Rashar, Rashar in seat three. The council votes for Mr. Ludwig for seat three. Three ayes and two noes, motion passes. During council comments, Councilman Brown states passionately that we are all friends, but that if anyone decides to walk out after what he says and decides that we are no longer friends, he can live with that. He says he is upset with the way council has been treated since the January vote, and that we, council, are the bosses, and if they worked for him personally, he would have fired them all. He then goes on to vote for Mr. Ludwig. Mayor Lake at the time then agrees with the Keystone Heights Airport, then agrees that the Keystone Heights Airport Authority has done nothing but bullied council members since January 9th. She states she agrees with Councilman Brown, she then votes for Mr. Ludwig. Mr. Fryer, Vice Chair of the Keystone Heights Airport Authority, excuse me, asked to speak to council. The mayor states that if she then asks him if he wants to continue to bully the council. He states he won't bully the council, and then goes on to say that the airport is on cruise control and that his, it has been profitable for the first time in years. cruise control and that his, it has been profitable for the first time in years. The airport, the authority, the Keystone Heights Airport Authority has been running the airport since 1991. Why has it taken 32 years to make it profitable, is the question I have. He goes on to, to ask us not to destroy what they have built. After this meeting, I realized that other members of council felt the same way I did. Why would just one member of the Keystone Heights Airport Authority be so important to them to continue their behavior? I have made it a point to attend all but one of the Keystone Heights Airport Authority monthly meetings. These meetings were also attended by other members of council, specifically Bobby Brown and Tony Brown. Keystone Heights Airport Authority meeting, April 4th, 2023. Mr. Seamer, who took Mr. Rashar's place on council, asked some hard questions to the Keystone Airport Authority, really hard questions, I guess nobody's ever asked before. He asked for copies, to see copies of all the lease agreements. The first words out of Chairman Kirkland's mouth was, "What are we looking for? We don't have anything to hide, I was just wondering." He receives instant pushback from both the chair and the vice chair. The vice, the vice chair, Scott Fryer, states, "And David Kirkland agrees that the leases are all basically the same." Then Scott asks him, "Why would you want to see all 75?" He requested the documents citing the Freedom of Information Act. Mr. Charlie Van Zant had to speak up and let the board know that if Mr. Seamer wanted to see each agreement, he should be allowed without question, and that is true. The board entertained a comment from Mr. Nichols in the gallery later on in that meeting, who stated he was wondering why Mr. Seamer, Seamer wanted to scrutinize his lease agreement. And he was, he's a tenant out at the airport. Again, pushback from not, from not only the board members, but the tenants too. This back and forth goes on with the FOIA request. Ms. Rakowski speaks up and, and says to ask him why he wants this information, or to see it, and where he wants it, or how he wants it. It's illegal. It's the Freedom of Information Act. Everything we do in this dais is public information. You can get copies, you can watch it on YouTube, or you can get copies at the minutes. And you don't have to ask, you don't have to say why you want them. Honestly, if you watch the Keystone Heights Airport Authority meetings, you will see just how much Mr. Seamer, pushback Mr. Seamer received from other board members just for asking questions, for being new on the Airport Authority Board and asking hard questions. The good news is, and there is, the lease questions resulted in the review and revisions regarding terms, annual rental fee adjustments, and signature page consistency from the Airport Authority Board. So that question about the leases caused them to revisit the leases and fix some different things that needed to be fixed. These defensive behaviors did not end with Mr. Seamer. The other newest board member, Bobby Ludwig, who was appointed to the Keystone Heights Airport Authority during council meeting dated March 6, 2023, has also asked some valid and hard questions, specifically concerning the airport manager position, and who decides who will do what and how that affects the overall operation. His questions also include airport security. These questions are asked in the Keystone Heights Airport Authority meeting dated May 20, May 2nd, 2023. He is met with defensive attitudes because he is asking the hard questions that no, apparently nobody's asked before, I'm repeating myself. I implore anybody in here, if you are interested and you want to re-watch these meetings, they're all available on YouTube. Pop some popcorn before you start turning on. As I bring you the, all these facts, and the reason why I think that the city should take the airport back under, as, as, under the city as a department, I want to be clear that these are, this is my opinion. I am an independent person sitting up on this council. I don't consult with anybody sitting next to me. I don't talk to them, they aren't my friends, and I don't mean that mean, but we just don't talk to each other outside the dais. We're not, it's, it's against the sunshine law. We can't speak about anything. We can say, "How's your family doing?", but, I mean, that's about it. I don't see these people until I come in here or at an event. I feel very strongly about my conviction that I chose to take the airport back. My conviction is mine and mine alone. I don't change my mind, and I'm not going to change my mind. I think about things, I do my research, I, um, watch other council meetings that are available on YouTube and on websites, and to see what, to get a, a feel about what's going on in other cities surrounding us. And I learn from that. I've got one more thing to say, and then I'm done. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. I'm terrible with this thing. I, I've never worked on laptops too much before. When I was working at the Naval Hospital, I worked on a real computer. So I'm, I'm sorry for the, for the, for the wall, I can hum. As you can tell, I'm very pa, I'm passionate, that was thrown around a lot. I'm getting there. Okay, this is ridiculous. When I was sworn in to the Keystone Heights City Council, I took an oath. That was one of the happiest days of my life, and I never felt so proud of my country and my city. I love this city, I've been here 53 years. I've raised three children here, they've gone to school here. I love this place, I'm passionate about my feeling for this, for this city. I am going to stay true to my oath, and I'm going to make policies for the sole interest of y'all, of the taxpayers, of the citizens of this city. I am not part of a team, I am one person sitting up here speaking her mind, and that's the way we all work up here on the city council. We have workshops, we can discuss things, but we are, everything that I'm telling you right now is coming from Christine Thompson. And it's all from doing my due diligence as a city councilman, woman, watching other YouTube videos, learning from them, seeing what's happening in other cities. And I did watch another YouTube video where the airport in Palacca was getting ready to invite two big businesses to move in to their airport, build buildings, and create a lot of new jobs. Some of those jobs were going to be starting at $85,000 a year, and I was very impressed when I heard that. And I thought, hmm, Keystone would, could benefit from that, especially since, in, with my experience in driving every day and commuting outside of Keystone to make a living and raise my children there. I would have jumped on that job had it been available to me. I think that's all I have to say. I am very unhappy that, about Lynn's decision, but I respect her. She is a wonderful city manager, and anybody who gets her is going to be really lucky. Thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it. I'm done.
Good. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
I feel better.
No, I, I think with, you know, our decision this past week on taking it to the city to vote, the citizens, which I think is fair, it's good to re, to listen to exactly what she just said, which most of us were there to see, attending the airport meetings or being at our workshops, et cetera, but it's been a journey, as I mentioned the other night. And it's kind of surprised me on a bunch of levels, and certainly, we're not any aviation experts up here, but it doesn't take too, nobody with common sense to sit and observe things that happen, to make your decisions on how you think, especially when it comes to a business aspect. And I know I've witnessed several things that threw my antenna up as well. My partial thing is the whole thing with sunshine law. We could go to jail if we're caught doing something illegal. Example, texting about something we're going to vote about, discussing anything one-on-one, it's really difficult to do what we do here because we can't share each, with each other's ideas. So we only hear what we have to say, which is why I'm going to tell you what I feel about it, which I appreciate you conveying that, is I feel like there's some hands that need slapped on this whole sunshine law stuff. And it's been very, very clear to me that they're, that all of that's not being followed. And I honestly don't think it's anything at all malicious whatsoever, I think it's more that sunshine law is really inconvenient. I was part of the Heritage Commission, and, you know, all the time I want to call somebody up and say, "Hey, let's try to do this," and you can't, we have to wait till we're all together and talk about it. But they clearly don't do that on every situation out there. And I think they've just gotten comfortable because they've had changes in people running things and doing things, you know, but it's not the way you're allowed to operate. And we let someone at the high top here, the state, hear about that, then they start watching them a little closer, and then they can get in serious trouble. So that is big, my biggest concern is the last thing we want is that brought to anyone's attention representing our city. So I do think it's a fair thing to let the city know, the citizens know, that they get to vote on this, but that will be with a town hall that's going to share, "We're doing it this way right now, and this is a proposed idea." There's so many rumors going on out there right now, all these people chatting about what they think they know they're talking about, that they really don't, including the tenants, or whoever else in the city that are people that go out there or are great friends with everybody. And it's not a personal decision, it's a city, what's best for, it's a decision, what's best for our citizens. So that's kind of my position when they wanted to say, "What do you have to say about this? Or why is your reasoning?", which I've already shared my reasoning with Mr. Kirkland personally. But that is my position on it, and that's why I feel like we're going in the right direction to have a vote. My only other comment is, I have met with both principals now, and we're launching for the first time ever in the city Keystone Heights, a state contest for an opportunity to win an essay on if I were mayor, what would I do? With the fifth, see, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders here in our schools. So both principals are very excited to be part of this situation, and they're going to give the applications to their students and their teachers to move forward, and we'll get some applications, so maybe Keystone can get on the map with that, with the state. So I'm excited to hear how that's going to go. Mr. Brown, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Well, we're good? All right.